What B stand for?
The what?
D.
I need a water bottle.
Water bottle.
All right, good evening to everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first thing we have on the agenda is the welcome by our committee chairperson, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. First, I want to say welcome back to everyone that has come here on this rainy Monday. First, I wanted to thank them for their dedication, time, and energy to this work. Folks who do this do so with the express intent to serve, service not to ourselves but to the children of our district who need us. We here are people of all different backgrounds and life experiences that clearly know this work is much needed and the data clearly backs that up. As we reorganize and drill down on our strategies, let us keep our compass set on the values, always keeping in mind why we do this valuable work. And we know it's going to be a challenging year and I just wanted to kind of start out with that positive note. And I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker, and I appreciate that. And I actually have an opening activity for you that actually aligns very much with your opening statement, Ms. Walker. So you've got in front of you some sticky notes, if you've already written on them, we can give you some other ones. But if you don't mind taking the blue one, and I'd love for you to write a statement of why is it important for us to be here? Not for you to be here, but for us to be here and doing this work. So I'd love for you to take a minute and just think about it and then capture that in writing. So why is it important for us to be here? If there's anyone who needs to pin, let me know. There you go.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, I see a few folks still writing. Want to give you more than enough time, don't feel rushed. Just asking, why is it important for us to be here and doing this work?
It's a little hat, right here, look right here, the little.
I did, I pulled it out.
Oh, did you?
At the right angle. You know, get these peanuts.
Use your pad.
I did. It's a strong sweater.
I got it, I got it.
Make the pull ups open and all breaks open and shoots all over my face.
Just in case you go back.
All right.
You're no quitter, yeah, you got it.
You just want me to stab myself.
No, that's my favorite.
They're safety, sir.
I didn't give you the big ones.
Shortly, yeah.
All right, so on the screen, I've got this video pulled up. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it, the Michael Jr. video about know your why. Anybody who has not seen that? Oh, wow, okay. So let me, I did not test it ahead of time, so I don't sound like it, we will try. But one of my favorite videos.
A lot of people, when they think of the phrase, I don't know, they always put the what behind it. How do I know what I'm supposed to do? The question is really to ask is how do I know why I'm here? When you know your why, your what becomes more clear and more impactful. If you know, like for instance, people know that I do comedy, but that's what I do. My why is to inspire people on the purpose. So I can do comedy, I can write books, I can be in a movie, because all of it is motivated by my why. In fact, I have a new web series out called Michael Jr. Break Time. We probably just did the six episodes on YouTube. So every single Wednesday at three o'clock, we drop a new episode on YouTube of Michael Jr. Break Time. What it is, it's me, I travel around the country and I do stand up comedy, kids, you know. And in the middle of my comedy set sometime, I'll stop and just talk to my audience. And we've been filming this and it's, you know, it's pretty cool. So I'm going to Winston-Salem, I'm going to show you a clip from Winston-Salem. And I'm just talking to this guy in the audience, he tells me that he's a musical instructor at a school. So I was like, all right, you're a musical instructor, you know, can you sing? Let me hear you sing a song. So this is what happened at the last episode of Michael Jr.'s Break Time. So you're musical director.
Yes, sir.
All right, so let me get a couple, let me get a couple bars of like Amazing Grace, can you do the first part of that? Go ahead.
Amazing grace, I'll sweep the sound that saved a wretch like me.
That rock is sick, as long as that.
Now, once you give me the version, it's if your uncle just got out of jail, you got shot in the back when he was a kid. I'm just saying, let me see the little version real quick, if you know it further than I'm allowed to see if that exists, let me see what you got.
Amazing grace, I'll sweep the sound that saved a wretch like me. Wow, Lord, Lord, now, right now, I'm fine, but blind, but now, I, I'll sweep.
Okay, here's what I want you to catch. The first time I asked him to sing, he knew what he was doing. The second time, he knew why he was doing it. When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful because you're walking towards or in your purpose.
Okay, so thank you for that indulgent. So, caution disclaimer, you know, his description, you know, what he said to the gentleman, I know some people find offensive. But what I'll also say to that is that gentleman immediately interpreted what he was saying. So it was a language that was shared between the two of them that they spoke, that they spoke. But again, you see the bigger picture to that. So it's not necessarily always the what of the work we do, but we have to be committed and understand the why. And that is what, you know, brings you back meeting after meeting. That is what helps you to remain committed when we get discouraged and when things get sticky and things get really, really hard. And so I think I discovered this video a couple of years ago and I've used it many, many times. I just watch it to remind me of the importance of my need to focus on my why. So thank you, I appreciate that indulgent. So I'd love for you, and now let me get you up to speed just a little bit. So in front of you, there are two sticky notes and folks have just been writing down, not why it's important for them to be here, but why it's important for us to be here. And, and the second part of that, and doing this work. And so I'd just love for folks to go around, just anyone, if you feel comfortable, to share what you, what you captured. And you're mic, so if you speak reasonably loud, at reasonable tone, they shouldn't get caught into one of these microphones on the table. Yes, ma'am?
I'm such a big picture thinker, I probably, maybe I didn't do it right, but my answer was to, why is it most important for us to be here? I put to speak up for our most vulnerable children and help them become the best they can be.
Yeah, thank you. I think that is a very powerful statement. Yes, thank you for that and I appreciate your vulnerability and sharing that. I know that is near and dear to your heart. Thank you, thank you so much. Yes, sir?
I wrote, it is vital for this committee because we keep the paramount issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion as part of what our school system must represent all of the time.
Yes, yeah. Sometimes it's really easy to move left of center. And it takes a group like this one who's committed to equity throughout the organization to bring us, bring us center and to remind us of what we need to be reminded of. So thank you so much for that. Anyone else? Yes? Yes?
I basically just said, we need to be here to help, to heal, remediate, and repair inequities in education in order to have a more diverse and inclusive educational community and a community at large.
And that's a huge challenge because for anyone who's done the research, who's, anyone who's had the experience, the challenges that we are tackling have been here a very long time. I can tell the story of my mother's struggles with finding equity in education for my two younger sisters who were disabled. I can talk personally about my own experience coming through elementary school, grade school, high school. They, they have been around a long time and so it is a huge challenge that's, that's in front of us. And, you know, I think it's very important for us to name it. There, just Tuesday night, last Tuesday night, there was the second social justice, race and social justice institute that was facilitated by our New Hanover County Government Office of Equity Diversity. New, New Hanover County Schools and UNC Wilmington were a partner in that. And we had a gentleman, Mr. Okandella, and one thing that he talked about in that institute during his presentation was it's so important to name, and Casey, you and I just had that conversation. So we have to name it if we're going to be able to, to address it. Yeah. Lena?
Yes, I'm thinking that this is the perfect segue to listening and learning from each other because that's the only way that we are going to clear our vision to bringing more equity into our practice. Because we all have a different idea what equity is, how equity should look like. But if we want to make it happen for a county that is bigger than we are, so we have to have a common view to, to make it happen. It's not my way, it's not your way, there is a middle way that we all are going to agree upon. So if we are here and we have, we struggle together and we share together, so hopefully it's going to bring that vision to a reality.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that because I think part of our work will be in creating those common definitions. So that is something that we will, we will get to. So those common shared values, right now, we're working on goals. And we're building out our short-term goals and identifying what our strategies are. But when we get to start that work, the work in addressing those strategies and implementing those strategies, we're going to have to definitely begin establishing that common language. So when I say equity, you know exactly what I mean. When I say inclusion, you know exactly what I mean. When we talk about marginalized, there's not any confusion in what that means for us, not just simply as a, as a committee, but as a community. So I really appreciate that. Anyone else would like to share? Yes, ma'am?
So, you know, all the, all the statistics for any organization, including like schools, show that, you know, with diversity and equity comes higher performance. And, you know, that's ultimately the goal. But it was a couple of years ago, I, I found this quote that was, and I'm just paraphrasing it because I don't remember, but it was a scientist that said he was less interested in learning more about Einstein and studying him than in the near certainty that people of equal talent have lived and died in sweatshops and cotton fields. And it's just, it's, it's, it's true and it's heartbreaking to think about all the people, to Ms. Walker's point, that haven't been able to have access to live up to their full potential.
You're exactly right. During the institute, I was asked a question, my response to the question was a quote I had recently read and just like you, I can't remember the author. But it went like this and it was just so powerful, I don't know why I didn't write down the author at the time. Maybe it was one of you, maybe. But it was, some people wake up to an alarm clock, other people wake up to a, to a calling. And you're, you're exactly right, just what we've lost and not addressing issues of equity and inclusion earlier on, it's just almost unimaginable. It truly is unimaginable. Yes, anyone else who'd like to share? Yes, sir?
Well, I think that what I would say is probably very close to what you just articulated. And it's, and it's something I know that I've heard you say before, but when you know better, you do better. And, and I do think that the doing better is probably the more challenging of the two. And so I think that's where this, this work lies, so, but thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think one thing it's important for us to understand is, you know, it's, it's not simply about us who are in the room, it's about our community. You know, New Hanover County exists within the community. We need to be a reflection of the values in that community and in the practices and, and the priorities and the culture. And, you know, I think our community wants to, to do better. I wholeheartedly believe that. Yes, yes.
So kind of as a perfect segue into what I was trying to articulate in words, we as a whole in this group represent every level of education from the classroom to home to parents to admin to central office to community. And with those varying perspectives will help us holistically look at inequity within the district as we see it from the home to the classroom throughout administration. And hopefully starting to create more equitable frameworks, practices, and programs within the schools. And then kind of along with this, one of the personal reasons, I know that it was for us, but then for me, I think, you know, and I know Casey probably feels the same, Lena feels the same, and others. When you work directly in a school, you know, I picture that we probably come in here with a snapshot of five to 10 students every day because that's where our mind should be, is on the kids and their perspectives. Because although they may not be directly involved with this group, that's where our passion should lie, is making sure that those kids are represented and their perspectives are brought forth. And we put ourselves in their shoes and try our best to think about them at the forefront of our minds and have those conversations with them so we know where their mindset is.
Yeah, beautifully said, beautifully said. Anyone else who'd like to share? I don't want to look anybody because I don't want to.
I think there's two of us, we'll go.
I don't know what you're trying. I said, well, I associate my presence here with work towards justice and that cannot be done alone. It requires accountability, it requires face-to-face conversations, collaboration, action steps. And then lastly, on my mind was that young people as a whole, and especially from marginalized backgrounds, can't wait until tomorrow when they've literally been waiting for centuries.
Again, beautifully said.
Mine just partners with Casey in a sense because I said communities benefit when their members actively discuss, define, and pursue justice. And I think for me, just my experiences, you know, diversity was kind of a new term about 10 years ago. And then we found out it was useless because we were just using it too much without defining it. And I kind of feel like equity is going down that path too. And so for me, justice is just a little bit closer in precision, maybe it'll go away in 10 years. But what we're doing is trying to overcome injustices, centuries of injustices.
Thank you for that.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
That I, I wanted to add, I think, I think shifting perspective and understanding that equity is, is good for everybody.
Yeah.
Even though it means a loss of power from some, equity is for everybody because you end up with a more educated populace, you end up with a more fair populace, you end up with a more justified, just population. And that should be what we're always striving for because it's, a rising tide lifts all boats. So if we're really thinking about those that are the most marginalized, the most unseen, the ones that have the voices that are not allowed to, to speak or the voices that are at the table that aren't allowed to speak. If we are focusing on the ones that unfortunately have been pushed to the bottom, as they rise, we rise together. I think it's important to think about.
Do we ever take a tour of this housing development next door?
That's where a lot of our kids come from, I go there all the time.
Every time I drive by, I think, oh, I really wish I knew some people who live there. I really knew, wish I knew what was on their minds.
Well, I think maybe next time, Myrtle Grove and Alderman has a cookout, you've got a built-in volunteer.
Yeah, you do, you absolutely do.
Yeah, it's great, I mean, we do it usually once to twice a year. I know Casey's school does it, my school, we partner up because a lot of our kids, they, Myrtle Grove and Alderman both serve the Houston Moore community, so has Garden Lake and Hillcrest.
Yeah.
So for sure, every summer.
All right, thank you for that, thank you, thank you, thank you. So what I wanted to do, since we haven't met in a while face to face, and again, not just simply for you, we are live streaming this, but for everyone who is interested in supporting, who's interested in our work and supporting our work, I wanted to give just a little bit of the history. So we began, and Al, you can help me get back in, we'll get in that wayback machine. So we began the work of the district work group, so the district equity work group about three years ago. And if I remember correctly, it actually originated more around an issue of equity related to students who probably would be considered gifted. Because we had an issue where families who were able to take advantage of private schools were able to re-enter the public school system at it with an advantage over students who had continuously gone through the public school system. So our entry into this equity work in a more formal way came as a result of an issue related to ensuring equitable access for our students who were, you know, what we would say would be in our accelerated learning programs. So I don't know that folks necessarily knew that. Once we began the work group, then it became very apparent that there were a myriad of, of challenges that we needed to address and not only that, but that's where we began. Another precursor was a situation that arose at one of our elementary schools in the district about three years ago, involved with playing a game that a teacher had purchased, purchased on Teachers Pay Teachers. And it was entitled, I do believe the title actually was, The Slavery Game. And so that gave us some insight to the fact that our teachers had not been given the skills to address students and their needs and also in delivering the curriculum in an appropriate way. And so that really began our campaign around awareness. And I'll say probably for the last three years, it really has been about awareness. We've done microaggression training, we've done implicit bias training, and it really has been about building people's awareness. Because what we found was a lot of folks just did not and just were not recognizing the differences in outcomes. Or if they were able to articulate the differences in outcomes, they, they did not understand how they connected to the environments in which our children were, were, were learning or in the environments in which our, our children were being, being placed. And so for the last three years, we really have emphasized just that awareness. I think we probably would be a little bit further along if not for COVID. COVID definitely pressed pause on quite a bit. Then two years ago, we began the EDI Committee. And that committee originated out of the board's desire to really elevate this work. It wanted to make sure that the community understood that this was central for the board and that they were in support of this work with, within our community. And so that's where EDI originated. And so we created a process by which, you know, folks applied and then we started meeting. But to be very honest with you, I don't think we ever really solidified any goals, any clearly articulated goals. It really has been a lot of time spent really examining the issue and spending time reflecting on the issue, but not necessarily naming those things or engaging in those actions that would address that forward progress that we all wanted to see. I think we're in a very different place now, really excited about what we've done with our goals thus far. Can't wait till we get to that part of the meeting today to talk about that. And so here we are in February, and so as of January 6, 2022, we now have an Office of Equity and Diversity established within the district. And so as we continue in building out that office, what I foresee is our shift is going to be around building our own capacity to do this work, you know, providing folks with the resources and tools to do this work, and then also advocacy, making sure, again, that we're advocating and putting front and center those things that are more, most crucial to having that forward progress in, in that change. So our current work, and so in front of you, you should have a sheet that has your long and short-term goals. And so as you all know, we've got six long-term goals, we have six subcommittees working on those. And so we've got goal to equitable access and that subcommittee has identified three goals. three goals. And so I'll give you a chance to read those, and then Goal Six, that subcommittee has identified two. So I'll give you a chance to read those in case you haven't had a chance. So as we've said before, our overarching goals are really kind of like our purpose goals, those are the things that wake us up in the morning. We want to see equitable access and inclusion for all students. But those short-term goals, we define as what we see happening in short-term, anywhere from three months to two years in terms of achieving that. So when you look at those, say for instance, look at that short-term goal one under Goal Two, increase access to traditional high school-based specialty programs for linguistically and culturally diverse youth by 10% by the 2022-2023 school year. So, you know, you ask yourself the question, is that specific? Is that something we can measure? Is that something attainable? Is that something that is relative? And is that something that's time-bound? And it hits all of those. So then our next task is, so what are the two or three strategies that we're going to implement as a district to get us to that? So that becomes the challenge, that becomes kind of the next part of this in terms of the productive struggle. So we have to determine those two to three strategies to get us to this place. Because I think it's a very realistic, very reasonable goal. I think this is, you know, achieving this will help all of our students, it will increase our overall outcomes for our district and overall outcomes for the students who are part of the program. Because in doing this, you know, we're not lowering expectations, we're increasing supports to students. You know, we don't want to do anything that's going to lower their expectations, we want to make sure that we're supporting students in such a way that they can be successful. So thoughts and reflections on those short-term goals?
Well, these are great, it's great to see the work that's coming out, and I know that some of us met and discussed the emergence, and one of the things that was very helpful that you told us, Dr. Smith, and I've now reported to our subcommittee, is that these goals will not necessarily be accomplished by this group. These goals are for the district, and somebody in the district has to say, well, I'm accountable for meeting this goal. And so that's the part that I'm interested in, and it's probably just not time for that yet, when we get these goals established and we write them as SMART goals, what connects them to the people in the district who are accountable? Do they see these as the goals that they would have chosen? Do they feel like they have the capacities and infrastructure to go after these goals? And then we'll obviously have a role for discussing that, I bet.
Yeah, and I think those are all really good questions. So one, you know, kind of the big difference is you've got like a whole office of one right now, but still, you have a whole office.
One powerful.
Yes, but if you think about it, you know, having, you know, very specific and explicit goals that you're working towards as opposed to just really good ideals or aspirations, you know, by naming this and identifying this, and especially once we have our strategy, because once you have your strategies, you'll see the connection to operations, the connection to academics, the connections to student support services, the connection to technology, you'll see the connections to communications, you'll see the connections to all of the different divisions within our organization. And again, that's when we, and then our role will be to really monitor the metrics. And any adjustments we make along the way, all of that comes back and gets reported to this committee as well. Yes?
My head is spinning right now because when I'm trying to, I'm getting excited about all these ideas and goals and thinking, and I'm thinking right now specifically on goal number three for the equitable access and inclusion. When they are talking about the high school courses by 5%, I'm interested in knowing, and I guess the team later is going to update us on that, how, if we wait until high school to get these students into those courses, we are missing the window of opportunity because those students get motivated for those classes when they are in elementary, they are identifying their identity, they are identifying what they want, what they need, and they are going to love or despise their home language or their culture if we don't get them the right nurturing at the right time. So I'm thinking that one segue or one step, necessary step, how are we going to nurture these elementary students from early ages into knowing and loving these heritage language courses or, you know, from there, whatever the language is, how are we going to nurture that into elementary that is going to trickle into middle school and finally is going to give us those numbers into high school? Because just putting them magically into high school heritage language, they don't even know what that is at that point, and they are not going to access it unless we prepare them to want it to enroll in those courses up there. So I'm thinking all the connections that we have to make and establish to be able to truly achieve that goal, and we can surpass that goal of 5% very easily if we think it on the way from the inception, where does everything start? Home language surveys, and then why parents don't want to accept their children speaking their home language at all. Some parents are in denial of the benefits of that, so what kind of work we need to do with parents to motivate them to embrace their diversity and what they bring into their community. So it's a multidisciplinary embrace to make this happen.
So, Casey, did you get all that down? Because what Lena just gave you, Casey, what Lena just gave you were your strategies.
Got it.
So you, that's, you said it beautifully, so you, I heard at least two, and you, I would say you need, you know, two to three, but two could be your start. You just identified for Casey and her subcommittee, the strategies to achieve that goal. So, and that's the thing, and just because you identify a goal, that doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to hit that target, that's what we're shooting for. But it depends on the, the power of our strategies, if we select the right strategies, and how we implement those. But we'll know whether we're on target or not long before the due date because we're going to be monitoring the metrics. So thank you for that, beautifully. I don't know if you want to do this for everybody else, but Lena starts talking, y'all better start writing.
That counting that I don't even have my own goal yet, so.
You must be the queen of strategies.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, that's exactly what we run into with STEM too, by the time you're at high school, it's too late because it's all the prep to get there.
And this, getting the AIG teachers into the nurturing classes because they are so refusing to do it, oh no, I'm going to work with the students that are identified, oh well, how are you going to identify them if they don't nurture them in K2? So those are the barriers that we have to deal with on daily basis, we need to have a big mind shift. We need to prepare the students, when they get to us in pre-K, they are already two years behind because they didn't have a good thing going on at home. How can we close the gap even before they come to us? So it's my old, I keep thinking and I lose some sleep on thinking on those things every time.
When I think about, when you think about how we do AIG nominations, it comes down to the teacher perspective, and if we're not addressing inequity within our teachers and within our practices, then we can't even get, then the whole AIG nomination is not fair from the get-go. And then on top of that, when you look at the tests that they have to take in order to get nominated, the tests themselves are not culturally relevant to many students. So you've got to look at the full picture and how you nurture these students, aside of just looking at data, because it's, data is great, but if you don't understand where the data is coming from, then it's, then you've waltzed.
What kind of data they need?
You have to have that data within the, within context.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly.
We have, we have a student failing an Iowa test and excelling in life skills. What kind of test is going to give us an AIG nomination for life skills that they are so good at, so they can solve a problem just by looking at it? They help you, I need this, and they make it happen, and you don't even know how that happened, but they help you with that specific thing you need there. They sit in front of a test, they failed miserably.
I had similar questions about the AIG program, and I think we as a board had a presentation last year from Donna Sloan.
Yes, yeah. Here, to the subcommittee, yep.
And we talked about, and I think one of the things with my own experience, with my own child, he, you know, he had Asper's, no, and diagnosed when he was 15, so it was really early, but we couldn't identify the problem, but, you know, he did his battery of tests. I think what I, what I said to her at the time, or one time, was how do, why don't we reimagine what really AIG means and like how we gauge what is intelligence in a way? And, because it really, you know, I knew my kid was intelligent, but he wasn't the type of kid that would sit and do the work all the time, wasn't consistent with his tests, and I just thought, well, maybe we need to reimagine, you know, really what the criteria is for AIG.
So to go back to this, and again, great conversation, great discussion, but one, we're not going to be able to do everything at this, all at the same time, we have to prioritize, and so we've got these overarching goals, and so if you've got two to three short-term goals underneath those, you know, if AIG is the priority, then what does it take the place of? And then we build out those strategies to achieve that goal. Because again, you know, if we are trying to do everything all at once, and everything becomes a priority, then nothing's a priority. What I will say to you is if through these six goals, these six overarching goals, if we can identify, because there's going to be some redundancy, and we'll streamline, if we can identify eight to nine goals that the district is working on, that's going to be transformational. That's going to be transformational, think about the metrics that we're going to be looking at, think about the changes in practices, the impact on policy, it's going to be transformational. So just like Ms. Walker said, you know, AIG is an issue, it's a challenge, you know, but we need to make sure that shows up as a goal and it becomes a priority so that we can address those concerns. Because again, this work is about the work of the district. And so we're looking to address those issues that are of priority for us. All right, so these are great examples, if you and your subcommittee have not developed your short-term goals, you're fine, you're, I know you're in progress, nobody's behind, I know folks are beginning that work around strategies, that's wonderful, need my support, I'm definitely there for you, if you need my support in helping you to develop your short-term goals, then I'm there for you as well. But I think once we have these and we've prioritized even within our short-term goal, then that will allow us to really start moving toward identifying our common definition and creating that language within our district, and then tapping people on the shoulder to engage in this work at the district level with us. Because then we in essence have a plan, and, you know, I can't wait to be able to share that information with the board. The other thing that's up here is establishing processes to engage external and internal stakeholders. We are looking to create a parent work group and our student work group, and so we had some conversation at our last district work group meeting about that, and so I hope by the time we meet again, we will have a parent work group, we will have a clearly articulated student work group with a process for those people to come on. You know, we're looking for folks who want to support us in this work and want to engage in this work and then to support the district. So we will establish that, and I've heard from a lot of different parents, I'm really excited at the level of interest that's out there. And then also, the last thing in terms of current work is establishing professional networks with other DI officers. So I've had several conversations, I've got a call in to a person in Orange County, but I've spoken to a person in Chapel Hill and Durham, and I think Guilford, and then last week I was actually on a national call. And one thing that really resonated with me that I hadn't thought about it, there is no national standards for this work. You know, there's not, so when you think about academics, you can think about student support, you can think about operations, there is really this established either organizations, entities, there's a blueprint out there for that, there's not for this work. And so, you know, for a lot of folks, you are trailblazers in this work, you are stepping now into territory that is completely brand-new. And so it was really powerful hearing from some of those folks, and we were in a group of about 40 folks, and we went from Florida to Texas to Nebraska, and there, hopefully this doesn't sound ugly, too ugly, and Wisconsin, and, I mean, I mean, you just, it was just incredible to be in that room and to hear all the different voices, because, you know, everybody doesn't sound like us here in North Carolina. And so it was, it was, it was noticeable, but I actually, I ended up in the room with the young lady from Clinton City School, well, from Clinton, she's not from Clinton City School, but she grew up right outside of Clinton, so I'm thinking you can be on a, you know, a national webinar and still somebody who's close to home. But it was pretty incredible, but that was a huge takeaway that I, that I had from this work, but, but I'm connecting and building out that network, and I encourage you to do that with this work as well, you know, with whomever you sit next to, whomever you interact with, and also who you represent in your seat on this committee. And so our future work, so as I said, we're going to be establishing that parent-student work group, we're going to be supporting the work of our student equity teams, we had a young man who facilitated on Tuesday night, Adrian was incredible. And we've got three more that we're lining up, I'm actually meeting with a student from J.C. Rowe tomorrow, who is going to be one of our facilitators, and then I think I've got a student from Laney, and then a student from Isaac Bear who's going to be one of our facilitators. And then also, we're looking at having another summit this year, our students are asking for it, and they're really interested in coming together and showcasing their work, and I also understand that maybe New Hanover County Government, their Office of Diversity and Equity may also be putting together a student summit, so it may be something we can work together with, and if not, there'll be at least two opportunities for our students. And then we are looking to evaluate the impact of equity, diversity, and inclusion efforts. We have to continuously measure the impact that we're having so that we know that we are moving in the right direction and at the right pace. Casey, I think you said it beautifully, you know, how long must these children wait? Because for some of them, they've waited over a lifetime. So we need to make sure that we are moving with a certain level of expediency, you know, it can't be those, and I did read the article, those baby steps. Sometimes we need to make those big moves, and I think we've got the right team to be able to do that with. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday that's focused on the strategic plan. One of the themes, the areas that came out of the work of our strategic planning consultants is equity, diversity, and inclusion, and so we're going to be taking a look at the existing goal that Ms. Walker and I worked on together, it's open for feedback, and then we're going to be asking folks to help support us in developing two to three strategies for that. I see that work very much in alignment with this work, so really excited about that. If you can be there, that's wonderful, if not, please don't hesitate to send me your input or things you'd like to be considered. And then also, I'm going to be scheduling meetings later this week, I'm going to schedule them this week, but for the next two weeks out, I will be meeting with senior leadership, members of senior leadership and directors within our organization to find out how members of senior leadership, and directors within our organization to find out how equity shows up in their work, and to get their insights and their input. Because we want this to be representative of all of the divisions within the organization. And again, I spoke a little bit about my communiques with folks in North Carolina and across the nation, but we're also establishing, in my opinion, a pretty strong partnership with our Equity Diversity Officer, with New Hanover County Government. The plan is to do the same thing with our gentleman who's now with the City of Wilmington, and then we've, you know, had such an incredible relationship and looking to continue that with UNCW as well. Willing to work with any partner, but I think those are going to be a priority for us to strengthen our relationships with. And then I had a question in terms of the frequency of meetings for subcommittees, and what I would say is, you can meet however often, or you need to. Really let that work be driven by you and your subcommittee members, so however often you need to meet, please feel free, there's not a schedule. If you need me to be there, please let me know, and I'll do my very best, even if it's just to pop in for a little bit. And then for subcommittee chairs, my goal is to schedule a time with you that we can meet monthly as kind of a touch point. So if there's a place where you get stuck, then we can work through that, and then you can support your committees, and if you need additional support, then I am there as well. All right. It was a lot?
I have a question.
Yes.
Related to the goals. So let's say we want to write a goal that says, this group will report to the superintendent annually, and then we can explain what it is they'll report. Are we allowed to meet with the superintendent and say, we'd like for you to request that your principals report this to you annually, because that's the only way this will have teeth, or will you do that?
So what I would say is, we're looking to identify SMART goals, and I don't know how you would write that as a SMART goal. I think you probably could write that as a strategy.
Okay.
The strategy could be written that, you know, principals will report on XYZ with X, Y, Z level of frequency. But again, understand, you've got two to three strategies for each of your goal. Is it strategy-worthy? You know, or is there something else you'd rather do that would take the place of? Because you could have 18 different strategies. That just means that 16 of them aren't going to get done. But if you identify that as your strategy align with that goal, then it could, I think it would show up better there, because a strategy doesn't have to be written as a SMART goal. Great question. Anything else?
I think that is a good question, because like, when I'm, when I'm doing my job, I care about the things my boss cares about. So I think that, you know, that's a good way to, not, not that everybody doesn't already care, but that's a good way to really get a pulse on the status and drive it maybe a little more, so that makes sense.
Well, and, and Ms. Walker, help me out. I think one of our, or the goal we have in the strategic plan has something to do with creating a sense of belonging and something else. And one of the things that we, we said, and the way that we would measure that, is by doing a biannual, I think, staff and student survey. And so, again, if I, as someone who's leading a school or entity within the organization, know that there's going to be this biannual survey that's going to be measuring whether my employees report that they have a strong sense of belonging, connectedness to the work that's happening, or my leadership, or however it might be formed, then that's going to inform a lot of the other things that, that, that I do. So I, I think we, I think the thing we want to be real careful of is to get too granular. We want to keep it high-level enough that it is, that it covers a lot of areas. And this is not about, I got you, and this is not about, well, we only get one time. If we decide that a strategy's not working, so when we start looking at the metrics in your subcommittees or wherever, and it's not working, kick that strategy out and bring another one in. We just don't want to get a long list of 17, 18 different strategies, that there's no way that we're going to be able to monitor. I mean, I think two to three is reasonable, but there's no way that we're going to be able to monitor. And even, you know, if we get two to three goals for each of the long, the long-term goals, that's going to be a lot, and we may even have to prioritize within that. That's why I'm thinking there's going to be some overlap. But, you know, there is no absolutes in this. We want to make sure that we can get it as close to right as possible. And there, and everybody has an eraser on the back of that pencil, or if we write in ink, we can do strike-throughs. Yes. Anything else?
Well, I guess, I know we, we met last week, and you sent out an email today about some strategies, and I guess one of the things that I've responded back, it's a goal and a strategy to diversify the educated workforce, because we really need to do that, and I think it should be a short-term goal, because it's going to take some time. It's always been a problem, and every time you mention, it's always, we can't find educators of color, so I think that that's something that we need to start working on now.
So again, if that shows up as a short-term goal, and you guys build it out as a strategy, then that becomes a priority. Because I think a lot of times, we have wonderful conversations and discussions, but they leave open-ended, and in my opinion, what goals do for us is it makes it hard and fast. So there's accountability with what we've articulated as our goals and our strategies, because that's what we're committed to, until we explicitly say otherwise. But to have a great conversation where everybody agrees, but then no one walks out responsible for anything, just leads to the next time we come, we'll have the same conversation, we'll just be slightly more frustrated.
Good point.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're having four quarterly meetings in a year, so when we come back next time, are we doing our subcommittee work? Are we going to bring all our subcommittee goals and strategies together and talk about it, or how do you want us to do?
So what I would say is, that's going to happen long before we meet again, because that's going to be in May. So in my opinion, looking forward, by the time we get together in May, we really should have, I won't call it, maybe, well, we should have some evidences. I don't want to say outcome data, because sometimes that gets confused with two student test scores, but there should be some metrics and some results from things that we're measuring and taking data around by the time we get to meet. So just because we're not meeting, doesn't mean the work's not happening. I mean, I've met.
I know. We've had a lot of meetings.
Quite a bit in the interim. So no, this, in my opinion, this really is a public-facing meeting to really update our community about where we are. And so, once we leave, the work continues, and then we come back, you know, what is it most important that the community will want to know and needs to know about the work that's been done in our, in our absence or in their absence?
So the folks on our subcommittees, who are from the work group, will they ever be here, or are we the connectors of what happens here to them?
You are the connector.
Got it.
Yes. Now, that doesn't mean we can't have joint meetings, but this is the board-level committee meeting.
Got it, got it, got it.
Yes. All right, anything else?
I was just going to add, like, on our goals, you know, the numbers are very possibly going to change. They're just, I feel like more than anything placeholders for right now.
You mean like the baseline numbers? Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah.
No, that's not a problem at all.
Could be helpful to those that are still kind of like, thinking through it, and, yeah, because it's going to depend upon more information that we get based on baseline.
The fact that you've got what you've got is huge, and that there's no problem in tweaking what our baseline is. So if we want to go from 5% to 7%, because that's a much more reasonable goal, then we surely can. Yeah, that's not a problem. All right.
So basically, what you're saying is, in, in the interim, when we're having our subcommittee work, communicating back and forth to you. And then in May, we should get feedback before May, but in May, we will definitely get feedback on progress.
So yes, so when we come together in May, it'll be as we are in this formal setting, because, you know, a little semi-formal, but more formal setting. But my plan is to meet regularly with your chairpersons, who will be meeting regularly with you, and so everything that we present in May, essentially, you would have seen a draft-up, or you would be informed of the metrics associated with it, because that's the thing, once we have our strategies, then we've got to determine our metrics, and we're not going to wait till May to have that conversation. But yeah, yeah. All right, anything else? So Ms. Walker's going to do our closing, but before we do our closing, I've got another little activity for you. So with that other sticky note, if you've written on it, and I got another one, I can give you, not a problem. What I'd like for you to do is to look around the room, identify one person, don't write their name on the sticky, and write a statement of encouragement to that person. So just write a statement of encouragement around this, look around, and do not put their name on this. And I'm going to give the credit to Lisa Brenner, and Lisa, if I'm doing this wrong, I apologize, you can help me fix it the next time. But this was an activity that Ms. Brenner did for us in our, I guess it was a principal training, administrative trainer that we had. So write an encouraging statement to, so identify one person in the room. Do you need something to write with that?
I do.
Okay. And identify one person in the room.
Thank you.
And, you're more than welcome. And write an encouraging statement to that. Do not write their name on the piece of paper.
So, so we write their name on the paper, right?
Yes. But listen, you teach fifth grade. You know what I mean.
I know, that's why I'm laughing, because that's exactly, I was thinking about the melatonin.
Sure.
For sure.
Okay, so both of it. Hot dogs, pumpkin, hot dog.
Well, no, you, but that, but that would be how you'd fold a hot dog, it's a regular sheet of paper, so I was like, oh, please.
Yeah, so is hamburger or hot dog?
Is it hamburger?
It was hot dog.
Okay, it was hot dog.
Hot dog, hamburger.
Now I'm just kidding.
All right, so what you've got, both of it, everybody goes to the center. That's four. My needs to be there, everybody?
Yeah, watch out, Mark.
But this one, I was just doing. All right, everybody needs to get in, everybody needs to get in, somebody needs to be, all right? Okay, you got your piece ready? Okay, pass it once in the room. Say, pass again.
Pass it back to ours.
Yes. Pass again. Okay, pass again. And pass it one more time.
Still counting up there.
All right, open it up. Oh, all right, does this fit you in any way to your form?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so just wanted to close the meeting, and, and Ms. Walker, I'm not translating your content at all, but just wanted to close the meeting on just a really positive note. This work can be exhausted, and sometimes it feels unappreciated, but know that the children and the families of this district appreciate your commitment, appreciate your dedication, and, you know, hopefully with that note that you got, and I'll just remind, let the start of change begin with you. Even though it wasn't specifically meant for you, just know that it was meant for you, so, yeah. All right, Ms. Walker, anything you want to close with?
Again, I just thank everyone for all the work that you guys continually do, and we keep showing up, and I think that's going to make a huge difference. And now we've got Dr. Smith there to lead us. We're going to be like, twiddle down on some good things, and give some change to them.
Thank you, guys. All right, appreciate y'all.